Let's do it.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kind of like having the lights back when they go.
We all knew where to look.
I know. I do like that.
I get dizzy. I keep skidding. Looking for a flag.
Is there any conflicts of interest?
Believe so.
Um, approve the agenda as written. Reading of the minutes.
Awesome. April eighth, twenty twenty five, the Board of Supervisors met at nine AM with Dave Mobergher, Chair presiding. Members present were Schultz, Dozart, Mobergher, Hayden, and Rosberg. Minutes of the previous meeting were read and approved. On motion, the Board ranked an exclaim for public health and approved claim for all other departments. Board approved the Recorder's Office and Sheriff's Office Quarterly Report for January twenty five through March of twenty five. Motion was made by Rosberg, seconded by Schultz to approve contracts and bonds for Project, excuse me, Project FM, County twenty four, one thirty four, and fifty five, twenty four, Seal Coat and Base Stabilization on Yellow Smoke Road and M Avenue with J.B. Holland and construction incorporated in the amount of two hundred eighty three thousand, four hundred eighteen dollars and ninety cents. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Hayden, seconded by Dozart to approve the Letter of Understanding between Crawford County and oh, between Crawford County and the Crawford County Secondary Road Bargaining Unit. Alternate schedule, ten hour days from May ninth through September eleventh. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Rosberg, seconded by Hayden to approve Crawford County Secondary Roads Iowa DOT fiscal year twenty six. Budget and program motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Dozart, seconded by Hayden to approve proclamation of Adolescent Immunization Action Week, April seventh through eleventh, twenty twenty five. Proclamation is for encouraging all residents to take action to ensure that adolescents and young adults are protected from vaccine-preventable diseases. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Hayden, seconded by Rosberg to approve National Public Health Week proclamation, week of April seventh, twenty twenty five. This is the thirtieth anniversary of celebration, National Public Health Week. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Dozart, seconded by Hayden to approve the appointment of Dustin Durbin for Civil Service Commission. Motion passed unanimously. Sarah Messick, County Recorder, gave the Board a quarterly update for January twenty five through March twenty five. A motion was made by Hayden, seconded by Rosberg to approve the tax abatement for thirty six fifteen Highway thirty, Vale, David and Angelo Whitrock, new home. Motion passed unanimously. The Board had a discussion regarding Sidney Gossler's project payment. No action was taken at this time. At ten fifty two AM, a motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Dozart to open the ICIT report, closed session per Iowa Code twenty one, Section five subsection K, which allows for closed section to discuss information containing, contained in records in the custody of a government body that are confidential records pursuant to Section twenty two point seven, subsection fifty. Motion passed unanimously. At eleven thirty AM, a motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Dozart to close the closed session. Motion passed unanimously. Eleven forty eight AM, a motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Rosberg to open the closed session per Iowa Code twenty one, Section five subsection C, which allows for closed session pending, pending or imminent litigation. Motion passed unanimously. At twelve forty five, a motion was made by Hayden, seconded by Rosberg to close the closed session. Motion passed unanimously. On motion, Julie seconded Board adjourned at twelve forty five PM. Agendas for the next meeting are posted available at the courthouse on Friday, four thirty PM preceding the next meeting.
Did all that last week?
Busy.
You're always on the box.
Any corrections or comments?
You know, it's our food.
I'll clean it up.
During, we need that. But.
I'm guessing that was in, in that.
Oh. I don't know, but.
You know what that would be for? It would buy minutes.
What was it?
Card.
I wonder how I.
Guessing it's.
Ball card?
Yeah. Guess there was something that they didn't want to throw away, so they just put it on the desk and said, let's, the pressures. Deal with it.
Oh, okay. Better keep my computer close to back because somebody might wonder who did it. I'll clean this out this side.
Yeah, I don't know.
Probably say west side.
Okay, okay.
Not sure.
Inside.
Um.
Makes it make you go hmm.
Yeah, no kidding.
Before we get into supervisor reports, we did have Region Twelve meeting yesterday, or not yesterday, last week. Those are our audits from Region Twelve.
Oh, okay.
Audits went well. We had a new audit for Ron DeMoyne. Indefinite audits, they were very thorough. Actually, I think they realized that Region Twelve is a bigger beast than what they did. They got through it. Nice to have a new perspective on things.
I mean, those government entities, it's getting harder and harder to find firms to do those audits, right?
It's not cheap.
Want them stamped?
Yes, basically.
They're not cheap at all.
But going through the audit, I will say, we probably have one of the most aggressive Region twelve's, county fongs, and the state. I mean, we just make a lot of things happen and.
That's good.
Always looking at what we can do to do more.
And I guess Brick and Andrew is a great part of that.
Oh.
How do you, how do you compare?
Um, financially, what they're doing, the revolving loans and just all the entities and things that they serve, housing projects.
Every region have access to like the same number of funds on the local. If Region Twelve is just small.
Rick, Rick, Rick's a lot like Paul. He just goes after grants and USDA loans.
Shoes will be big to fill when it's upon his retirement, Rick's will be today.
And they got a.
Hopefully, there's somebody training underneath him.
They got a really good team too, you know, with Chris Whitaker.
Yep.
Yeah.
And Mark and all the guys that are, or even anybody else. We were both there. And they just.
Yep.
Do a good job.
And Brick, you know, serves on boards all the way up to federal level, doesn't he?
Yeah.
Out of DC and.
He's also on our health insurance group board.
He just is so knowledgeable. It's all right up here for him. And so that's hard for him.
Be interested in running for governor.
Let's leave him wherever he goes. We can get the best use of him.
So, um, that's all I got. So I'm going to that.
Okay. Go on, please, sir.
Yep, go ahead, Kyle.
Stopped over and talked to Louise this morning. She don't have her door yet, which I don't know.
I don't know. Does Jean know about the door?
Louise, she.
Louise's door.
Well, that's why I stopped over to see. I was like, I can't wait to see that door. I still would.
It was gonna come on tap day. She had told me the last time I was over there and then she didn't want it to come on tap day. And so I don't know, but she'll have to be there when they put it in to make sure that it gets done right. So there's been communication. I just don't know what the absolute holdup is that we're this close.
But my biggest concern about my conversation with her is that due to possible government cuts, that the, of course, the volunteer services that the VA may be disappearing, which means to us is that our VA van may be gone.
Why is that?
The volunteer services due to government cuts may be disappearing at the VA. So all the volunteers you see at the VA, when you go down there, might be gone. Which means to us, our van will be gone, which means our veterans won't be able to get to the VA as easy.
I don't understand.
Volunteer services?
Yeah, they're gonna cut volunteer services that cost zero dollars. Cause they're volunteers.
I was just gonna ask you that, Kyle. How does that save the government money if you cut people that they don't pay?
It's an easy cut to make. Makes everybody feel good. We cut this. I'm guessing. I don't know. So she's reached out to.
But they pay for the vans. They provide the vans and stuff.
Out of their budget.
Mm-hmm.
But I think we all need to also maybe extend a letter to our senators and especially us in rural areas, that that van is very important to our veterans to be able to access the VA.
Who owns the van like the week?
VA owns it.
The VA.
I thought DAV owned it.
And it's run by, must be run by the volunteer services. It's part of that. So.
Okay.
So if we can reach out to our senators and say, this needs to be highly looked at and maybe, needs to be kept, I think. And I mean, there's a lot of people that access the VA through that van. And we got volunteer drivers that drive it. As much cheaper with service that you can get.
But didn't they get that, Ty had made that phone call right when we found out because can't think who it was, was signing up to be.
I remember that too.
Oh, gosh, Gordy House was signing up to be a volunteer. And then you made that one phone call. And I think that got kind of straightened out. So is it still? You know?
I'm checking.
Yeah, you know what I'm talking about.
Yeah. But I always would like her help with that. Should we put together a letter from the Board of Supervisors to the senators? Wouldn't hurt, yeah. I think hit all of our senators and representatives out of Washington with one letter, you know?
Craftly, maybe, or I don't know. Have you guys seen that town hall he had? For Easter break? That wasn't very pretty.
Couldn't Louise put some, put something together for us and we could sign it?
She pretty good with all that stuff.
Yeah, I could ask her to do that. We can sign and board it on, so.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah. And I took the long way into Deniston through area this morning and I drove past the county farm and I called Coonan and see how our seeding was coming.
And?
All the cool season grasses are done. He's waiting to do the warm season grasses. And he want to do it this week, weather permitting. So uh, and the, and the food plots, they're gonna try to do this week and they'll be done. So but they did all the cool season grasses.
Because you got last fall?
Yeah, I think so. So they're just waiting for the weather.
He drilled it in. Has he drilled them in?
Yep, him and Pat, Cory. Pat Cory is gonna do the biggest share, but he's got a bigger drill than Coonan.
That's got my old drill.
Turn, turn, Chris? They're doing it, you know?
Yeah, I, they are, they will charge and they will get reimbursed, but it will be kind of through the NRC. It's gonna be kind of a pass through deal. So. We might have to pay somebody to do it.
Right, exactly, exactly, exactly.
So they're working on it. And then we'll have to remember to get after them trees, have somebody spray them trees. I would have shredded last fall too, so.
Can roadside do that?
Uh, we'd probably ask or
Okay.
or conservation or something. Have to have somebody do it. Otherwise, them trees are gonna be worse.
They tend to bush out worse, don't they?
Yeah.
You think it would be conservation, right? I mean.
Yeah, I thought they were doing, don't they have a new piece of something or another?
They came and shredded them.
They shredded them with their new machine.
Oh, was that it?
With their new machine. But you know, there is a, we do have a management agreement with Penance Forever.
Good point. Good point. Good point.
I think we should maybe, maybe could exercise some of that.
Exactly.
And granted, we're the ones that end up getting called to the carpet by the NRC if it ain't done, but it needs to be done. My manager will have to let them grow a little bit so they get some point ledge on.
He's on Jake Sigbar and.
Langol.
Yeah. I can reach out to Josh and see what they think.
Okay, that sounds good.
And yes, center meeting Friday. He's much for many. Oh, I don't do it by Zoom. I'm a tractor town, so.
It's kind of nice to have a real thing to do for the tractor.
How can you zoom when you're driving a tractor?
Auto steer.
Craig, tractor combine, I have my iPad mounted right there and you just.
I see you said.
Right there.
We'll see.
See, they don't have any laws against that yet, while. You know, field. I think on a highway, you can't do it.
There's, I would be.
Hey, hey, hey.
I'm just saying, it belongs to everything else. Are you gonna buy?
It takes quite a combination of getting your phone to your iPad and to the radio. So you got speakers and yeah, you have to bring the sun in. Sometimes they get it all.
Technology is changes quickly.
It does.
Oh, boy. Just quickly.
Yeah, and I think it's gonna continue to change the rate that we have seen.
It's amazing.
Pretty soon, they won't even need you in that tractor.
It's not far from.
No, it's.
It's not because I mean, our, our ag leader guys will sit at his house and watch what my monitor's doing. I can get a control of my monitor.
Yeah.
So it's not far away.
Man, makes you wonder when you retire, what farming will be like.
Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of concerned about what my, you know, what my kids, if they, what is it? I don't worry about myself retiring and you doing what I'm doing, but I don't know my son, what his future in agriculture is gonna be.
You know, though. The Adam Grash, which we all, all of us remember the Adam.
I do.
I remember hearing stories of how he was so resistant to tractors and them mules and, you know, cause he had a army of mules, you know? And he was so resistant. I wonder if he said the same thing to you, so. You know what? You got a sharp kid. He's gonna figure out ways.
Come up with different ideas, but well, as farming as we know it.
Yeah.
Someone's gonna have to come up with a different.
I remember in the nineteen eighties, I had a discussion with my grandfather, who was born in nineteen eleven. And I just said, just think, grandpa, I said, you had more in common with the people that farmed in Jesus time than you do with the farmers.
That's no kidding.
And that was in the eighties. And think of how much has changed since the eighties. You think that's ancient farming.
When was the last time you seen somebody drop a plow on the ground? Just Dave, do you own a plow? Oh, you've seen.
I did this spring.
Did you really?
Yeah.
We should have got a video of that.
Been a long time.
Chime their blades up, buddy.
My Uncle Jeff, he has a plow and he plows all the sealed edges.
Does he?
That's what I was doing.
Just to bust, just to.
Get the action.
My Grandpa McCone and you.
Anyway, that's my report.
I said, when they bought their first tractor, his dad said, did one round with it. He goes, nope, I'm done planting. I'm used to planting with a team. I can see the planter in front of me. I don't like looking back at the planter. You're planting.
No, that's because my, my grandfather said, told me, said, I, he said, I remember when I, I, of course, the combustion engine, you know, kind of started back then. And so he got his first tractor and he bought a loader. And he said, my dad, meaning my great-grandfather, came out and said, that is the stupidest thing you could have ever bought. Why would you buy something when you can have a pitchfork in your back? Instead of paying money for that, just work harder. Scoop it by hand.
And that was a good, we still did that.
That's just right. But that was the thought, you know?
I was probably more common with Jesus when I was.
Farmhouses everywhere.
You know, we had one of them trolleys that went through the horse slash cabin barn.
Row of full houses.
Remember them? Crap into that?
Yeah.
I think, I'd hate to tell you how many loads of that I ran.
Yeah, but it's just, I mean, every generation says that, I'm sure.
Look at Kyle, you got a girl around the nest in there.
It's pretty cool.
Yeah.
Craig, you have anything?
Uh, it was, no, with it being Holy Week last week, I mean, it was a pretty short week for me. Or not short week, but a uneventful, I guess, week. And we didn't meet even as, as supervisors. Uh, just on a, on a personal note, I guess I can publicly say that we are expecting our fourth grandson in October. Or all these daughter. Taryn and her husband Matt are having their second boy in October. And that'll be our fourth grandson. Cause number three is due next month, here, May thirteenth. We have one.
For the all boys?
They're all boys. It'll be four sons.
Just wait till you get that girl, you'll be.
That'll ruin you.
Well, we'll have to buy new toys. Cause right now we're.
No, you don't. Not necessarily.
Yeah.
But no, busy week coming up. I mean, today, Wesco Finance meeting at one. Doze meeting again Wednesday and early childhood meeting next Tuesday. So back in the grind.
I tested that, Terry. I set a tractor and a baby doll. That baby doll won the hand of death.
Jean, you have anything?
Uh, not a whole lot. They're asking, Dawn is asking that we sign a letter in support of stepping stones. And my only question, she sent a copy of a letter, is if we would send it directly to HHS or to Iowa Primary. So I'll find out about that. I'm sure we'd be in support of, filling out a letter to be supportive. It's very well written.
And that's a crucial service of area.
It is very vital to our area and it's a service that they really, if we lose that in Crawford County. And it's a very well-written letter, but if it's all right, I will find out. How we can have it right during and we'll all sign it next week, if that's okay with everybody. There's still the conversation, you know, how all the bills are gonna get paid after July first and the unemployment uh, for the advocates that will no longer have jobs. And I think that attorneys will have to untangle that because as of July first, there won't be a twenty eighty agreement. But I believe in the twenty eighty agreement, we all agree that we would help pay unemployment. So even if it wasn't stuck with all of it. And so if Caitlin doesn't find a job, and just as an example, we would, I think, all be on the hook to help with their unemployment if there. Is that your understanding?
Some bill of state.
What?
Some bill of state.
How would we pay unemployment for a person that's not our employee?
I don't know.
Wouldn't happen.
Well.
Won't happen.
There was some track. Just saying. So anyways, the conversation.
How it happened.
That once the twenty eighty is resolved, that organization and all of its.
You'd have no responsibility to anything.
Unfortunate.
It is unfortunate.
They aren't gonna keep her on the.
Well, I'm not sure, you know, she.
Gosh, that guy's sharp as a tack.
You know, can, can you really?
I'd be surprised if she doesn't have a job before this is all over. A lot of them have already.
She's looking, she's looking.
She might be looking for just the right job.
But, you know.
And I don't blame her.
Accounting anymore, you know, you bring one on full time, you know, that's an expense and it's not in our budget to.
Well, we don't have a budget for that kind of stuff.
No, we don't have, you know, that's why it's. So where does, where does one go to start your own business when you're used to having, you know, insurance and that's not easy and so.
Bang.
But.
Bang, get a loan.
Yeah.
Well.
And go, yeah, it's not, it's not gonna be easy.
It's not easy, no.
No, no, but that's just kind of, kind of some of the things that are going on in the background a little bit. So stay tuned. It's all coming. Anyways. So.
I don't.
Not a, it just seems like a spell of grace since we've been together. So. Lots going on. So.
Everything, Ty.
What? Oh, my turn? Sorry.
All right.
Distracted, being distracted. Uh, thanks for getting that stuff out of the room, Terry. It's really looking pretty nice in here.
Yeah.
Just wanted to say that.
Almost, yeah.
Sure you were.
I do mic our cable back this way.
I know. I do too.
You do? Yeah.
I do. I just felt.
I don't know when he's gonna move the screens or the screen, I mean.
Maybe my OCD, but it just felt off.
Yeah, yeah, I know. And we're so used to the flags being where they're at. And it's nice when you walk in the room and you see the flags, you know?
Good point.
That kind of thing. Yeah.
So set our world back and.
Back on.
Yeah.
On its axis.
Did we lose that bench? Wasn't there two in here last week?
I think there were two. And we could bring one from the hallway in and take chairs out. I just haven't had time to.
Nope, that's fine.
Fiddle with it too much more.
Working.
I had a plan for some, a big couple of pieces of furniture that are in the building, but one wasn't available. And one looked unimpressive, frankly.
Assuming that since the courthouse was built, this has always been the supervisor's room?
I think so.
So what do you think the railing was put up there for?
Just has.
Just a separation between.
A gallery and a meeting space and I think.
And that's always been, as long as you've been here, that railing?
Yeah, I like it.
I, I do too. I just.
Gives it a little dress.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we should think about some, some, getting some, acquiring some nice Crawford-centric photos to, or you know, paintings or photos.
And I think we have some around the building that we thought about moving in here.
Okay.
Um, just waiting to see what ends up on that wall.
We just, the only thing we gotta get back on that wall is Kyle's doodle board and calendars.
Yeah, and that's over there.
Well, you got, oh.
You are doodling now.
I'm the doodle.
Are you jarred?
And you also.
We can move it back if you want to move back.
I'll get a laser pointer so I can hit it from here.
Just don't hit me in the eye.
You know, in that nine one one map, I'm assuming that how, oh, that June of twenty fourteen.
Yeah.
Because you know, you used to have a nine one one address. People had their, my grandparents, I remember them having it on their phone, but there wasn't their physical address. It was a different number.
Oh, yeah, that went out in.
Yeah, that's a long time.
That went out in like, I think nineteen ninety one, when they actually went to the.
Went to your.
Nine, nine, when we wanted to call nine one one to get emergency services. Prior to that was call six, seven, eight, three, seven, 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 I think for fire. If you want an ambulance, it was two, six, three, something other than that.
I don't know if Dwayne could get us one that's updated up.
I, yeah.
Updated maybe? I don't know.
Yeah, I'm sure there's about probably a hundred and fifty farm places that.
Don't exist out there anymore.
Oh, yeah, there's probably thirty new ones out there.
I love it.
Do we have any current photos, like courthouse on like a flag-raising day or?
With all the flags up?
Yeah, there's, I mean, there's one on the website.
Online, I know.
Yeah, maybe.
Maybe have it printed or something, have it.
Have some newer photos that.
Yeah.
Relate to the times.
Right. That's a good idea.
Like Bank, I think Bank Iowa, they must have sent somebody out and just took pictures of the countryside. You use them in their buildings as of Crawford County or around each bank. And that's really neat.
Who would we have that could do that?
I don't know.
Do we have any photographers in the courthouse?
Easy to look on Facebook about anybody.
I don't know.
The new place would pick her up.
Yeah.
Or maybe.
My daughter gets better from Scotland. I could put her on it.
Maybe that current picture of our Board of Supervisors.
Yeah.
I know that was one thing Amy talked about was.
One, Rick, great that one.
Doing the pictures of the elected officials and department heads and maybe down by the front door above the, like the water fountain where that big blank wall is.
Would be nice.
And maybe just something to maintain, you know.
Oh, that would be a good idea.
I think so too.
Didn't that sound? Hire her here.
I always liked looking at the over pictures of the Board of Supervisors dressed in their suits every, you know, and black lights and whatnot.
That's how they, that's how they dressed every day.
Yeah, that was, yeah. But I think that when they took those pictures, they never thought that someday people would be looking at them and saying, wow, that was really good old days. And that'd be also.
There's that one picture of them all supervising. We don't know. That could be my great-great-grandfather.
I think that are down in that, right outside the door.
Seen a picture of them? I mean.
So you know, you saw it?
Took over your eye.
Oh, sorry. I was going back to work on paperwork here. I really didn't have anything last week. Same reason that Greg brought up. It was kind of a busy week, but then I went out and I threw it. So I was double busy. Let's see. CDC had a meeting, but I actually missed this one. On the, on the national level stuff, Naco, we had a leadership meeting, but it was just addressing trying to pick up the pace, pushing back on some, for farm bill stuff to get it back hopefully on track.
Are you going to Washington County?
Yeah, I plan on it. Was that now?
You said?
Yeah, we have a ISACs board retreat.
Yeah, it's for the Board of Directors.
Jack Sewer, Sewer is the president of.
That's south of Jackson County, right?
Yeah.
It's out there by the. It's out there by the.
Oh, it's over there by Kelowna, the county seats. It's Washington County, it's one of them bedroom counties of Iowa City, you know.
Yeah.
You know, very, I, I got a friend over there that's got a truck lines.
I did not RSVP, I told Kelsey, don't count on me.
You said it.
I like that range.
I just told him, like, RSVP, because I, as of right now, I don't have anything stopping me from going.
How did you get an invite? Are you on the third district? He's president, I forgot who you.
For a guy to rail run.
No, I'm secretary.
Secretary, okay.
So, yeah, no, that's why I thought I, I thought, so I thought I should probably try to go.
You're falling behind, yeah.
When your turn's coming, just hang on. See, all your experience on being on this board, you, you knew when to keep your head down.
The army told me that.
Never make eye contact.
Never raise your hand.
Yep, no kidding. Indeed, they'll still find you if they wanna.
Oh, yeah.
But, uh, yeah, I don't. Ag stuff, I mean, as far as it goes, they're, we're just little stuff, you know, I mean. Mostly the farm bill is what we discuss and what we're gonna do there and then they were talking about specific things farm-related that they would need. So nothing too serious, um. Yeah, I can't think, you know, I've, I've been, I went, Kyle, you said, you, did you go down and drive Ariens Street or what did you drive?
Yeah, I drove down.
That one is rough.
Actually, Marion Avenue was good, it was really good today.
Well, did somebody go out and agree with it?
Almer was standing outside, so I stopped, talked to him, he said Andrew was on it for like most of the day yesterday.
Okay.
Like, almost all day on Blade yesterday, so.
And I, I guess I will say that there's significantly more traffic on Highway fifty-nine.
Yeah.
Than there is, has been in the past, just from a guy that, I have to travel fifty-nine to get out to our, our farm and when we come back. The amount of traffic you gotta wait for, before you can get back on that highway, and there's certainly more semis uh, traveling that than I remember seeing. And so people are using.
West lane though, didn't they?
Yeah, and kinda direction to go that way now.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, what they put up as far as the, the merge over and they got a big arrow for Dunlap going to go that way.
And I think one, I think the Google's now taking them down to one ninety-one. Cause that, one ninety-one, I took the, that way with my truck last week. And man, was I meeting a lot of vehicles, trucks over there, so I think that, now, there's always some of them.
Right.
It is actually shorter to run to Omaha.
Exactly.
Do you think that's a pretty busy highway to start with?
Yeah, but it's been, it was, I mean, from what I'm used to seeing, the time of the day I'd go down there, I mean, it was, it was loaded up. You know, so that's helpful, I think, because two hundred tenth, when I went and drove that sucker, I mean, there's some spots and I. You really wouldn't wanna meet somebody if you were, you'd get a slow way down, cause it's, it'll suck you towards the ditch pretty good, so.
Lot of fat cattle travel down one ninety-one.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good way, good route to avoid riding on the interstate. Yeah, a lot of fat cattle, I used to run that a lot, actually, I rode it all the way to Council Bluff, so now when you get down there, you wanna hate somebody. It's not a good time for trucks.
Well, it's been a problem, I, I went down there with Paul at six o'clock or six fifteen morning morning, just to kind of assess the damages and. It was kinda, you know, the roads are definitely being used more and I think Paul's doing a great job of keeping the communication going.
Six fifteen?
Yeah, it was early.
Did you make him practice?
He didn't ask for it.
That's terrible, he missed the best egg sandwich on the planet.
Yep.
He didn't know we could ask for it.
We'll have to clue him in.
That's why I always show up early in your house.
You do. I hadn't even started looking.
Yeah, other than that, you know, I've been driving around on some other ones that just, I think that, and a couple of them where you're, the real heavy used roads. You know, when you come off of a stop sign where it's, you know, some of them got a little bit of washboard, but nothing.
One thing I will say that I have, I saw this year. That I've never seen before, but in the middle of a gravel road, a pocket gopher had dug a mound.
Middle of a gravel road?
In the middle of the gravel road.
I've seen badgers that I would.
I don't know why. It's got a mound right off the road, and then it's got one right in the middle, and I was like, that's amazing. This gravel and stuff, he'd go, man, that's hard on my claws, but.
Take a left turn at Albuquerque. Just to turn at Albuquerque.
No, I don't.
So, yeah, I mean, I don't, two weeks, you think we'd have a lot to talk about, I mean, I don't, it was pretty relatively quiet, other than. Just routine stuff, I mean, I don't, every, when I sneak to Carol from, you know, doctor's appointment or something, I'll try to run, especially down on your side of the. Thirty, run down there and sneak gravel, grabbles over to Carol just to drive one that I haven't drove or something. And we do better than Carroll County, so, you know. Uh, and sometimes up on the north side, if I got a little more time, sometimes I'm late and I just hammer across thirty, but, but, uh. Yeah, I don't know, I, I, I just, I think that the guys are doing a pretty good job, while we're getting some rain here, I, I'm real excited about what the next week or two will bring. For them being able to catch up some rough spots on roads and set some of these soft spots in, you know, cause we still got one in it.
They've been targeting.
Think we'd have as many this year, but.
They've been targeting with white rock.
Yeah, I think so.
It helps a lot.
Yeah.
I seen something the other day and I had actually called Damon about it and asked what was going on. And one of our newer blade guys, he was trying something totally different, trying to cut washboards out, and I was impressed that he. The new guy took some initiative to try something totally different.
What'd he do?
He took all the gravel and kind of just shoved it to the side, the road was so rough. I said, what the heck's going on here? Cause they're plowing a lot of electrical lines up north.
Yeah, that's.
I thought maybe it was something to do with that, and I said, oh, he's just, his road was so rough, he said he just had to do something different.
Just try.
Don't say him, for trying something different, so he took the gravel off and then just smoothed it down and left the gravel sit on the side.
Yeah.
He said, there's too much gravel there.
In some places, there is too much gravel, which road was I on the other day that they, they must've did some of that bore right down the side like Paul once done? And boy, oh, boy, but somebody had already brought white rock down on that and they were working it, but it was still squishy out there on that edge.
Yeah, they're doing a lot of underground electrical.
Is that what that is electric, or I, I didn't know if it was electric or if we had some.
Fiber or something.
You know, some fiber optic coming in.
Well, north, north of May, in around Ricketts, so after that ice storm, they busted off. And I was going underground with it.
Okay, so, and that's where I was, was up there, so, yeah.
Still looks like a war zone out there, all poles are just laying in their field yet and there, electrical lines in the road and they just have any clean mess up there.
Right.
Pushing in the ditch.
Oh, wow, well, I got a picture of uh, somebody that there's just sand going on. Pass it around, you can read the text that goes with it.
That they said we're just putting sand on? Well, we've had that comment, I mean, they can put, they, they don't want to pay more for property tax, we gotta find gravel.
Looks like our Stratford gravel that, cause it has that brown color that they add ten percent limestone to.
Yeah.
Actually, thought that that works in pretty good.
Things, that's the best thing is to try to explain to them, you know, we gotta, we gotta combination of both so that we can afford to give you anything, you know?
Can read the comment of it, read all the comments.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's proven, I mean, you can't take just river rock and help other.
No.
Well, that's what Iowa State guy said, that you gotta have the. Buying everything, be able to blade it.
We're the only county that around that actually grades our gravel, everybody else just thinks what they get. Trying to make excuses, yeah, we're limited to what we have, but, I think we do a pretty good job of spending our money as best that we can.
Well, it goes back to.
Not perfect.
You know, it's the thing, same thing, Kyle, I mean, I, I mean, I drove these gravel roads tons. You know, all over wherever there's a hog barn or cattle yard or grain bin, you know, and then. Hogs hauling them all over the dang state, eating cattle out of the north, north central area, you know, I used to haul a lot for producers out up there. And just the different types of things you see, I mean, just people that keep hollering for more white rock. Go to Humboldt County and drive gravel roads when you're out there somewhere. Especially if it's August, and you'll understand why we don't want a hundred percent white rock, cause man, it gets rough. And they got chuckles that'll rip your axle up underneath you, you know?
Same way go down to Cass County where they got limestone, and that's a softer line that just.
Uh, it's that shillipers line, man, it's just soft and turns them to ag lime real fast, the farmer's benefit the best of it.
From the dust that floats.
Good windy day and a lot of traffic.
I can tell when my dad's farming down there, all the white rock gets dumped on that, how much better my crops are along the, along the gravel.
Good ones.
Yeah, I don't think I would. Yeah, I don't know, the, uh. That's, that Stratford gravel's been pretty decent, hasn't it?
Yeah, I, I think they, you know, with the blend, you know, without the.
Once you get some more white rock on top of it.
But you can't see it because it blends in with the brown, but.
From the distance, it looks like same.
But I mean, we'll blend some more, too.
Yeah, that goes back to this process.
Yeah.
Financially, even trying to keep taxes low, but yet maintain and do a good job with, efficiently with what we're providing.
I just like to, you know, if you take note, and we know what we spent on white rock last year, and you look at them piles, which are a lot larger than they were in the past. It's still, they aren't huge piles, you know, so you gotta still use it wisely.
Lot of it's just getting in here, a lot of the expenses though.
You know, I mean.
It's cheap as it's gonna get.
Yeah, yeah, you're never gonna get them cheaper. Never gonna get cheaper, it's, you know, and the thing is, I was getting at, all them, all this time I've been driving them, you know, I used to have my fair share of sarcastic. Comments for what this board was doing, you know, I mean, God, can't they put some real rock out here? Well, now I actually understand why it was hard to do that, you know, I mean, and I don't know about the railhead, if that's always, I don't know, but that's always been that. Readily available. You know, I mean, so that helps to some degree, but it sure don't help a lot.
I don't think it was to the, I think when your dad was on, it was when they committed to the really.
Yeah.
Accessing that rail more, the ball, I think, long time with counties got right from there, but I think that's when they really.
Started adding with the rural basic.
Yeah. Putting a hundred fifty or two hundred thousand towards that every year.
I don't, but I think that's.
It's made a big difference.
Big difference.
I, I, I will tell you this, and that's why I like to drive around this time of the year, I remember when I'd go out in the spring to load corn and you guys were trying to get. Corn, corn out of the bins, I don't know if it was help paper getting crop in or what you were doing, but you'd go out there and some of them gravels, I mean, I, you could see pumpkin tracks. In the gravel, where we'd sink that much that our pumpkins were dragging up the road by, you know, pump, the differentials.
Well, but.
I mean, you'd see, you'd see that, and, and, and if you had a low-set bumper, them guys all had bumpers that are tipped back a little bit, and I, I never put a low, low-set bumper. On my truck because it, that's, and you, you could have that sinking up where you'd start pushing rock.
We get, we start getting, well, if we ever get a normal winter, yeah, we'll have that again, it's just, we've been worse since it's been dry.
Yeah, that's true, Kyle, good point.
But we have addressed a lot of the main roads with a lot of rocks, so. Yeah, they can be as bad, but.
Funny you brought that up with daddy, he'd always ask, what'd you guys work on, you know, you, you make sure you get that extra hundred and fifty thousand for white rock in there, that's doing a lot of good. But I'd really get them going. I say, you know, I go in there, Terry's got my coffee poured for me and sit down, he goes, she never poured me coffee.
Yeah, if you don't pour me any, you had to come back, right? Might pour it on me.
Terry, I tell him, pour your own damn coffee.
Michelle's kinda nice, though, she'll do stuff like that.
When you're sitting on that side. That chair does have wheels on it.
I don't expect it to.
Well, I got more room to move than I used to, so.
Y'all have wives, so, there's that. We have each other. We can console.
I almost brought you guys some bars today, but I'm glad I didn't. Jerry will have to eat them all by himself.
I'm sure he'll complain, Matt.
I overcooked because we didn't have the big crowd we initially do, so.
It's hard to adjust cooking when you're, yeah, it's really hard.
It was easy for me, I, Natalie's been, she had pneumonia for four weeks.
Oh, no.
Now she's fighting bronchitis, she just burps.
No.
And her, her lungs and her throat are just killing her from all the coughing she's been doing for over a month. Anyway, uh, so I've been doing a lot of the cooking, I've lost weight in a lot of. But she, uh, I made, I made things, I made Easter breakfast, I made, I came home from church and then I made ham and mashed potatoes and stuff and. I, I didn't overcook, but we did have enough, there was just two of us, cause the kids went out to Disney. Zach's kids went out to Disneyland with their other grandparents, so Zach was, and then Zach, we didn't have any truckers that wanted to be gone over Thanksgiving or Easter, so. We had to go down all south and.
It's quite a sales pitch, Ty, that if you'd like to lose weight, I had a tire loss for guys to cook.
Well, you don't trust the skinny cook, can't trust the fat one.
Morning, guys.
Morning.
Beautiful out there.
Thank you, Ben.
Any good news, Ben?
Always good news.
It's good news, beautiful morning.
Know if anybody's done anything impressive lately, cause we really haven't heard here at the board officially. Good job.
You're right, I haven't been, not here soon, so. Yes, I'll have to send in an application, of course, thank you. Oh, of course, I'll send him a, yeah, application, man. I can't imagine that, that would be to hang out by this point, so.
Had good weight off shoulders.
Yes, it is.
So what happens now, you said that, that, that you pass, is you have to send in something to the state to be.
Then you actually licensed, an application to the licensure board, uh, of the, they ask you. A specific project that you've worked on over the past year that you had involvement on, things of that nature.
Okay.
Just one more step.
So it's now ongoing, is there CEU classes that you need to, just to keep your license up, that you have to take so many hours a year?
Or it'll be so many hours of continued education and professional development hours that I'll keep up on.
And are those through the state or?
Uh, well, through, I suppose, through the licensure board, and they, they keep track of that, uh. Oh, God, let's see, well, how, I'm gonna visit Paul, how will you submit those, it's something I haven't had to do yet, so. But a lot of those are achieved through like the, the conference is.
Oh, ISAC conferences.
Yeah, ISAC, the annual conference, uh, in, or Des Moines, uh, every December. That's where a lot of those are achieved for county engineering. But there's lots of opportunities for, for CEUs, like, yeah, we'll, we'll keep up on that.
Well, way to go.
When you have it, you're not gonna let it go. Keeping up on CEUs.
Way to keep up, way to keep at it. Sometimes it gets frustrating when you don't attain it, you know, and then to keep going, that takes some willpower, so way to go.
Thank you. Well, first I'm, oh, this year, uh, West Central Rural Water, um. They wanna do some boring up on our E Avenue where we grew it a couple years back, where's, uh, Lax is putting in a property there. Uh, two spots where they're gonna be doing some boring here, uh, across the roadway. They need to bore across the road, uh, they, they, they come plow through the trees at the acreage, they have strubles there, so they wanna bore across the road. Come, come up the road a little ways and then, and then back across the road to, uh, Langlands is the acreage there, so. Uh, this is, this is just what happened for them to be on a board a while.
Why haven't you, you stand there, I don't know, somebody gets stuck on there.
Does just Dave need to sign it?
Yes, just Dave.
Probably gets all of them though, doesn't he?
Pardon?
He needs all of them.
Yes, he does, yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's four of them, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, no, it's okay.
Dave, you didn't finish your name.
I'm not.
What's that?
I, I make my own voice. Should be a little longer, those are like initials to me.
Forgot the bower part.
You just kinda.
That's the farmer part, you gotta make sure you remember that.
That's the flat line, sorry.
Uh, construction, uh, we'll be doing the, the bail bridge up there, uh, overall in fifty-five, they, they probably won't start in that around. At the May fifth is kind of the, the date that they've, uh, keep throwing at us, so that's what we're anticipating on, is May fifth. All right, Farley, know what then? No, we'll, we'll make sure.
How long will it take them to get that done?
I anticipate anywhere from three to five months.
Three to five months.
Depends if they get a piling.
We'll keep the bridge crew away. We're the ones that found it.
We don't want, yeah, we don't, no point be obvious, so, yeah. So, yeah, there's that. Anything can happen, so. But, uh, the fall goes well, three to five months, uh, is what we're anticipating. Well, uh, we got the detour signage ready to go up when, uh, when it happens, uh, the detour, of course, uh, at one forty-one, uh. Uh, or S nine, no, I should say, is where it kind of starts, but we do some advanced signage at one forty-one there indicating to the traffic coming through there. Shouldn't be anywhere near as bad as this, and the detours that we gotta go on, I mean, but, you know, people will find their way around it, but, uh. Uh, we'll, we'll keep up on that.
That was started off with a bang. Got that signage up right. Or went down like a city.
Yeah, no. And the other project there, we got the Yellow Smoke Road, uh, M Avenue, uh, subgrain stabilization, we'll have a pre-construction meeting for that project here on the thirteenth. Uh, uh, G Collins is the contractor on that. It was a little bitter. Anticipate that, just really, I, I spoke with them, they don't anticipate they've taken much more than four days, four, four days, or, or a week, the time, uh. Pretty straightforward project, uh, they'll, um, okay, then, uh, they'll. Incorporate, uh, some fly ash, uh, some cementations, material with the existing roadway, uh, it'll take them a couple of days to do that, uh, wet it as they do it, roll it, and then, uh, come back with a seal coat over top of it, and. And, um, Blacktop Services, I believe, that they're sell for the.
Do they dig up some of the old ground first, though?
They grabbed it.
Yeah, they, they incorporate it, mix it in with the, the six inches of the existing roadway, it'll be incorporated with. We'll, we'll put out two inches of clean limestone on top, along with the, the cement material. And it all gets mixed up with water. It'll inject water as they do it, and we'll mix it all up, and then, uh, when they're done, they roll it out, and it's smooth, and it should be kind of like a poor man concrete, you know, that, uh. But it'll stabilize that eight inches of subgrain ahead of that, uh, putting down a seal coat, and that's.
How thick's the seal coat?
Uh, it, it's just a surface coat, uh, spray some oil, and, uh, peat gravel over top, so it's not thick at all, really, that's kind of why we've adopted that. On these seal coat roads, trying to stabilize the subways, because really all you're doing is putting a crust over top of it, yeah, at that point, real similar to what we did down on.
Yeah.
That's what was, or, man, you know. Remember, they really run into the issue, they weren't putting enough water or something in it with it when they did that one, and I remember there was something we can.
They were just having issues getting started with the water amount, and the machine just wasn't, the computer wasn't reading it, doing it correctly, and. You know, after a little bit, it actually did get going, so it did get started.
Remember, there was one issue we had with that one, but it did get corrected, but.
Yep, it did, and that one correctly, we were re- progressing well. It looks a little dry, that's admirable, when we did it, all of a sudden, too wet, back it off, you know, so. It was kind of a learning process for us, too, uh, when these guys had to do it, uh, they've probably seen a lot more of it, and, uh, and, uh, kind of consistency that they're after. Yeah, well. We'll do the testing on it.
It's a memory bag, definitely remember.
Do we do bores in this like we do when we had school or anything? I can imagine that.
No, Casey, you layer around, and he kind of keeps watching on it, you know. I know he did on the last one, and then I know Ben was over there quite a bit, oh, and I know I was over there somewhat, too, so.
What he's really looking for is consistency of what they're doing, you know, making sure it's working good for them, uh, you know, as far as the testing, that's kind of. More of the testing we've done in advance, sending in our gravel samples, they mix the cement with it, and then kind of get a mixed design for us, uh, when it's going out there, it's a little bit hard to build. A beam or, or something to be able to test compressive strength and what they're doing, they'll be said and done before we ever get any results back for something like that, so, but, uh. Uh, but, so, a lot of the testing he's done prior, just knowing what we want to put out there for them, so he's really watching for, is it getting incorporated good, is it too wet, you know, you know. Uh, looking for things of that nature, and, uh, not getting too wide, you know, so, but. As far as our construction, they're working on J Avenue right now, they'll probably be finishing that up this week, that grading, uh, over there. Now they'll move over to a different part on J Avenue, a little bit east of there, over between, uh, two twenty and two thirty there by, um, McCollis. Uh, gravel sec, that gravel segment up to her place, and then, uh, they did agree to wanting to do the, the dirt. Uh, segment between McCollis and Dieter's place there, so, and, uh. So we'll be moving there next, uh, the bridge crew, they'll be finishing up on their, the bridge there where they're at, or a deal, uh, this, this week.
Probably, yeah, depending on the rain, when it starts either tomorrow or Thursday morning.
Or never.
Another very nice project with our DOT sections of bridge.
It did rain on Easter Sunday, though. Same. That's a good sign. Seven Sundays after.
Right. So we got seven Sundays of less than a tenth coming.
Come on, cheer us.
Pure sarcasm.
Right, it rains on Easter Sunday, it rains seven Sundays down the road. Oh, that right?
That's the old saying.
Both pretty true.
Who's your happy?
Pretty good strap. I can't, that's all of it.
Share some yours with them.
You have some happy dollars that you have to pay.
We get all geared up for an inch of rain, and you don't get it, it's like pretty frustrating. Get up in the morning.
This is just a.
You're gonna get mud on us.
We've ended up with that direction.
Low, uh, someone zeroed it two times.
I was gonna say, I was seeing where there was some people had posted, well, I had zero traceable. That's not good.
The dude was.
That's it.
Well, it's basically got four tenths.
Yeah, Charter Oak had like four tenths.
That's it.
Put out something now. Aside from that, great side, guys, there's outseating some, uh, distributors from, probably from last fall, yeah, and, uh, you know, and, uh, keep kind of seating behind our, our projects there. Um, Charlie got to him, so, I think he's gonna work out real well, you know, lashing on everything. He's one of the best places to go trick or treating. If you're ever enjoying a road trick or treating, he treats the kids well. As you should. A full hop and a full candy bar.
No business, no. Beating a man, sugar him up. Have a nice evening, Mom and Dad.
No, he's, he, he's gonna work out real well. He's studying for the, for, take his, uh, what that's inside, and kept it all roadside, uh, certification exam, so.
Good deal.
Got that, so he'll be fine, man, so. So, uh, well, and Paul has a resolution, embargo resolution prepared.
He checks us this morning.
Something being considered, um, as, as he, that told me, kind of. It's not excited about doing, uh, an embargo on the road, like, a lot of the traffic has been, uh. It's, it stemmed a little bit, the, the traffic on the roadways there, it's not great, but, uh, it has, uh, cut down some. Aryan itself and town is going to, they did put up an embargo on their city roads, so we're working with them to get them some signage, uh, uh, yeah, they're, they're, uh. Coming into town there, so their roads will be embargoed.
What does that mean to be embargoed?
They're putting in a five ton per axle weight limit on their roads, so, you know, should stem some of the traffic from these large trucks.
So embargo just means a weight limit?
It does, yes.
And then the weight limit is exactly the same?
The white truck can get ya.
But now.
The, the weight limit's exactly the same, embargo means, you said, five ton per axle?
Right, right. Now, on that, ag vehicles are exempt, so anybody, uh, ag vehicles can still travel the road, they'll need to go get an exemption from the city of Aryan, but, but they are allowed to, to.
Still travel on those party markers and type areas.
It, it might stem some of the through traffic, some of your larger, your reefer trucks, you know, or, uh, non-ag through traffic, uh, and, um, so.
Some of that, that they didn't, they embargoed, 'cause they aren't staying on the road real well, around their corners.
How, how do you police that? I don't, I don't.
DOT.
DOT.
Are they?
They, uh.
Well, I mean.
They've indicated that if the roads are embargoed, they will make sure it's enforced, which, and there again, it'd be. A, a better idea, like I say, I know all's gonna work with them, try and do the best to get, get it shown where the road is closed, so, because once you get up to Aryan, they got no choice but to go left or right.
Right.
You know, uh, to, to give them the bans long enough, not to get them there in the first place, it'd be a far better solution, and mitigate a lot more traffic, but. Well, end of the day, they, they, they say they will enforce the embargo, should we, they should, embargo be placed on the road, which is just a latest year, I'm sure.
All day long, they'll have a.
That, I don't.
Enforce.
They might. I mean, with the first couple days. Yeah. Word, no.
That was my first question. How, you know, how do you, and how, where are they getting weighed at? How do you know the way?
They get them a sign on the road.
They, they have portable scale, bring Greg right out of the back of their pickup.
Things I don't know about, so I'm just figured I'd ask, because.
They weigh up.
Ask your Greg.
We can assume.
So, I know.
Well, in that respect, Aryan Avenue, that should stem a lot of the traffic on Aryan Avenue, and, uh. Steve Ballmer said it must be already working, 'cause he's, the truck traffic had decreased immensely past that house, so. Yes, but, you know, and, and that probably just generically happening on its own, you know, people probably getting, uh. Words out. Tired of driving them rough roads themselves, and they're deciding, uh, to, to. Take the detour, you know, possibly, or find an alternate route, so, but they must be finding alternate. It has stemmed quite a bit, the traffic has on those roads, and. Dust control's helping, the road, you know, we're past the, you know, the early spring, I think, uh, to where, you know, worrying about, you know, spots in the road showing up, we have to do that one. It does get better, they, they fix up one spot's hole enough, but, and, uh, and try and keep it bladed up enough to, you know, not disturb the dust control, was coming a bit of a challenge, but, uh. They're keeping up on it, I think, so. Uh, echo Paul, I think we've done what we can do, you know, to, to keep the roads what they are. Embargo, I don't know, A is not excited about, but it, it's kind of, uh. My history with embargos, uh, really effectively doing anything in the ag world out here, I mean, back, I don't know what year that was, probably. Oh, eight or nine, they embargoed E sixteen and L fifty-one, and. The only ones that really stopped from going on was the county truck, 'cause we didn't want to be the leaders being caught on. The lead to gravel a lot of times, so, and the semi-traffic really never slowed down on them.
And then the main ag, uh, semi-drivers and stuff like that, all they have to do is come in and get a permit, exemption, or a permit to be on it, and. You got a law, it's, it's a man getting exemption.
Do they get that here at the engineer's office, or where do they?
If it is on a county road, yes, they get it at the county office, but if through the city of Aryan, they would have to go request it through the city.
Oh, boy, they do hurt next.
So. Conversely, with the, they, they against the embargment in the larger roots, 'cause ag, I mean, we just be. Giving a black eye to the ag sector, in my opinion.
That's, but I agree with you. I, I just don't think it's worth its time.
I mean, we're in a situation we don't want to be in, but I don't think we'd be making it much better by embarruing our roads. Oh, that's my opinion, yes.
Yeah. And what do you like for ag, like, what would a person need to bring into the courthouse to, how, I'm just asking, 'cause I.
No, I don't know what they'd actually bring in, but they're, they're coming to an exemption for ag.
No, I, what they would actually have to show, you know, to, to show that they're ag.
Well, I didn't know either, but I, just as soon, if somebody had to bring something, they would know ahead of time, 'cause people like to just come to the courthouse once, if possible.
Yeah, well, I.
I don't know. They've done the smartest thing, we're only in the office, now, we're walking to come in and get an ag exemption. They could, it's, it's, they're much of that traffic, they, they know about their.
Their commercial example, they'll, they'll utilize it.
I just take no action.
Bring your adder to the air.
I take no action. I, I, I didn't.
Because you know them better.
I, I almost, most of them. Probably know.
Believe it to me to ask a question, nobody knows, but.
Ben, I think we can move on and just take no action.
As long as we're.
I may get a shot. I feel like that's, I know, but, uh.
Right? My question is moot, Ben.
What else we got for us, Ben?
Probably just, uh, well, equipment, uh, now, still, May, I believe, or, wait, oh, motorator, uh, I believe, same for adult trucks, correct, and still kind of, and, um. But, uh, I know our spray truck, and I think they backed that out, but it's a line sometime, that, that, we, uh, so, we probably won't see that for this. But they don't order it, they don't really get it, no.
You no kidding?
Yeah, we're, we are greater than, uh, our trucks, relatively soon, so, uh, probably here in May. Aside from that, that's all I've got.
Alright.
Thanks, man. Congratulations again.
Thank you very much.
Jim, thank you.
Ben, you been practicing?
What?
You been practicing?
Oh, I know better.
We gotta practice for next time.
Yeah, I got it.
We got a better kid.
I'll be your partner then. We're gonna take this.
As long as you have fun, that's all that matters, man. That's why I was.
Hey, Ben, are you gonna be around after our meeting?
Yes.
I'm gonna swing down and grab you.
So.
Okay.
Congratulations again. Good job. Now you just gotta get your surveyors.
Yes. You weren't in here. Signed up for.
Are you really?
You already did?
Alright.
You're a good man.
Oh, good, good, then I don't need, Ben, never mind, I don't need to talk to you. So, I, they got it covered. These guys got it covered.
Oh, alright.
I didn't do it.
Yeah.
So then you were, you were going to Kyle's office.
Okay.
Yeah.
Hurry.
Aye.
Maybe I didn't do it.
No, you were in on the conversation when he was over.
Okay, yeah, yeah, gotcha.
And before, prior to the meeting starting.
Oh, two.
Yeah, alright. What else we got?
Discuss and take action, amend date for public hearing.
Yes, so originally it was gonna be today, didn't get in the paper, so we've already published it, but we needed to reset the date.
Would you have a date? Twenty ninth?
Yeah, the last day possible to do it.
Twenty ninth, ten AM?
Yeah.
Make a motion, we reschedule that for the twenty ninth at ten AM.
Motion by Jean.
Second.
Second play. Time? All in favor, Sally?
Alright.
Chair both sides. Discuss and take action, insurance rates, Cobra rates, HSA contributions, that was kind of hacking, you know, we got some more to. Here now.
So do, does the company or the county is actually set the Cobra rates, or the Cobra rates are set by, they're just whatever the insurance rate is?
Company sets the premium, you get to set the rates that.
So.
The county pays, and.
So I always thought if you had to go on Cobra, you just paid whatever the cost was to the company.
That's right, we can do.
Set it differently, so you could pay a portion?
I think we, we set the rate plus a.
No, we can.
Add a.
We can add two percent.
Administration.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
Pass one on.
Absolutely, we all.
That's right. I forgot about that, pardon.
Yeah, we can add two percent onto that. So I sent you what we're currently paying, twenty-four, twenty-five, and then, um. I know we had had a conversation, um. Quite a few weeks ago, and it was mentioned to get back to that seventeen percent. We'd kind of gotten away from it in our transition to the new, the new, um. Company that we're with, and anyway, some of that extra cost, um. The HSA contribution, and that was paid out of, um, our fund balance, our self-funding fund balance, so. The resolution twenty-five dash nineteen, the new one. With the longer setup, it's got more graphs on the back.
Do you have the, how'd you get the exact same?
Oh, I have the map.
Did you keep the bronze, too? What do you have?
Maybe you're the same.
You have twenty fours?
Yeah.
You have, you, you guys share.
You're right, you're right. Down on this end of the.
Oh, that's my experience.
Everything's good.
Yeah. Some folks are harder to train than others, but anyway.
Old dogs.
I know, old dogs, right.
Don't let him get further right.
So you can see in comparing to the twenty-five to the twenty-four, that our premium did go up a scant bit, they talked about that, the, um. IG HCP, which is the group that we're involved in, they were asking for an additional five dollars per contract per month. So that added on, plus, I think, I think Wellmark did like a point two eight percent, so very scant amount.
so very scant amount of, of an increase, so from one thirty, like for a single on that Plan fourteen, um, currently the premium is nine thirty-one twenty, or nine thirty twenty-seven cents, it's going up to nine thirty-five and ninety-nine cents. And then that COBRA rate is just a two percent increase. So any of our retirees or anybody that leaves Crawford County and wants our insurance, um, that would be the rate they would pay for that Plan fourteen. And Plan fourteen is more of a traditional co-pay kind of plan. I don't think that's the technical term, but anyway.
Pretty in line with what we had.
Yeah, yep, it just is a very minimal increase, and which is good because you, I hear horror stories about, you know, it's some of the increases, I don't know if Amy was coming in or not, but.
I think we did a good thing by going to Holmes Murphy and going to X.
Yeah, I think it, I think so too, I think so too.
Well, Mark in the beginning.
But, so you can also see in that Plan fourteen, what the employees are currently paying, and what they will be paying, it is, it is a little bit of an increase for them. A little bit to go to that seventeen percent.
But I think that's powerful.
Right. And then, uh, if you go down to Plan sixteen, which is the high deductible plan, and, um, you need, we need to talk about that HSA contribution. Um, so currently, the HSA contribution that the county gives to our employees that sign up for this particular plan, a single plan, the county contributes a hundred and thirty-two dollars and sixteen cents. A family plan, the county contributes two hundred and ninety-six dollars and forty-two cents. And that is a month, I believe, I'm almost positive.
Right, that is a month.
It is, um, and so. So what I did was, I computed the employee portion of the premium to seventeen percent, the county, the employer paying the remainder amount, and then the difference of the total premium that, um, um, Holmes Murphy is charging us, or IGHCP, the nine thirty-five ninety-nine, I did a difference, and that's where I came up with the HSA contribution in the new year. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yep.
So.
Where I think it should be, so, I mean, so the cost to the county is exactly the same.
Yes.
No matter which plan any employee takes, be it a single or a family.
It's actually a little higher with the high deductible plan because of the amount of the premium. The, so the premium for the high deductible plan is seven ninety-nine eighty-one for a single. And so if you take seventeen percent of that, and then, so any other HSA contribution would come from the employee, and that's, um, that's governed by the IRS, that amount, that the maximum amount that they're allowed to contribute towards their HSA is governed by the I, IRS. Um, whether it's a single or family plan, those dollar amounts are different, I didn't bring that paperwork, that amount with me, well, I might have it in my booklet, and if you got that Holmes Murphy, the renewal booklet, I think some of that info is in there as far as HSA.
What you're saying is that.
So the county is actually contributing more to this plan, partially because of the HSA.
Because if, if you look at the high deductible plan, it'd be the six sixty-three plus the one thirty-six.
Yes.
So that gets you up to about seven ninety-nine versus the other plan, we're just paying seven seventy-six.
Yes.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
Yes.
But the actual total cost between the employer and the employee hits that.
Yes.
Nine thirty-five ninety-nine.
Yes, which you don't have to do, I mean, you don't have to do it that way.
More and more sign up for that.
Um, we had a good amount, I can't remember the number, I feel like it's in that book though, the number of high deductible plans that we currently have signed up. And our open enrollment's gonna be starting here in the next couple of weeks.
Be the one I'd be on if I was an employee, or if I, if I chose that option, I guess I am an employee.
You are.
But, um.
Um, thirteen signal, single and eleven family are on the Plan sixteen currently.
Out of how many employees we have altogether?
About a hundred and ten plans signed up.
Not a huge amount, though.
No, not a huge amount, but, I mean, almost twenty-five percent, a little less than twenty-five percent.
In May, if they.
Right, and some may come off of it, some new ones might join, you know.
Would you say our HSA contribution was last year for a single plan?
One thirty-two sixteen.
One thirty-two sixteen.
And two ninety-six forty-two for a family.
So I guess that's a discussion to have, is if we will not have the HSA payment from us just equal what our employer cost is for the original plan, you know, so it's seven seventy-six eighty-seven, so we're currently paying six sixty-three, so it'd be a hundred and thirteen dollars and three cents.
Oh, okay.
To make it exactly equal as to the county share. Um, instead of comparing it to our actual total cost of premium.
Right.
Between the employee and employer, if you just wanna use just the county share, the employer.
Right.
Then it'd be less than that one thirty-six eighteen, like I said, it'd be one thirteen oh three. But that would mean it would be less than last year, I guess.
Right.
You. Is there a way to, I mean, I'm not against it, I'm just thinking, does it save us money for having the county money, even though we're paying more, with the higher deductible? What a return that we getting on that dollar, I think it, I don't, I generally didn't see it in there, it seemed like it would be possibly our favor to pay that extra.
Right.
For.
Because our employees are paying a hundred percent, they're paying the full deductible, I mean, they're paying.
I see.
They're paying, how do I say it? They're not getting to participate, like, on the co-pay thing.
Instead of them going on claim earlier, they're paying it through their deductibles.
Right, doing good.
That's why I'd like to see that happen, I think it might be. I, I think we're trying to hit it.
Right.
But paying more.
All the license to ski.
Here, I thought you were coming in to work us over.
Like I can wipe or anyone over?
Find that out.
Last I got a couple horses saddled, we're gonna get done here.
We need to know this information today.
No, I, I do.
Seeing you all, got it, I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm for this, but I think that's the question, we can, we can pose to them and say, what would that save or how would that benefit the county at all by having these people go on that plan?
Right.
With us paying more? But it says on the back, right?
It's good we aren't, they're paying the higher deductible.
Yep.
So they're paying less on their, on their actual, on their claims. On their claims, there you think it.
Yeah. And I should be able to answer that, I think.
I would think Holmes Murphy should be able to give us that information.
I was, I don't know if I'd have been in here, but I don't see it, so.
Paying is hopefully something.
Yeah.
As if that's the case, we wanna try incentivize them.
Yeah, but even maybe if that's the case, we should incentivize harder to put into this.
Right.
And that's kind of the purpose of that agenda, to get people off of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that works out in the long run.
And then the HSA, if, if they're, especially if they're young and don't have a lot of health issues, they're.
Exactly.
They'll build up a hell of a fund there.
Yep.
Yep. And that'd be a, a way better for them in the long run, and obviously better for the county in the long.
But you might wanna.
Got a question, that, maybe you could pass this on to Holmes Murphy.
Okay.
You know, this HSA, obviously, we, the county pays more towards the, towards people going to the HSA, you know, monthly, it's gonna cost us this. More versus if they were just on the regular plan.
They should be the same, because that contribution is what.
No, it's less, it's more because the employee's paying less.
But then it would just be the contribution, um, be less?
Just to make them both equal.
Right.
Right, so the seventeen percent of this is this. And that's to get that, and then this is the, the contribution is the difference to get to that full premium, if that's the route they decide to go.
So it is, I mean, it's a saint then?
No.
Just a little bit, the six sixty-three plus the one thirty-six.
Compared to these two.
So it comes about seven ninety-nine, you know, it costs if they do the high deductible plan versus seven seventy-six if they just do the Plan fourteen.
It's costing the.
The county.
County.
The county a little bit more, so my question would be to them is, regardless of what we do today, just for future references, is on the backside, if we have more people move to this HSA, would that be saving us on longer, because we're the higher deductibles and so on and so forth?
They'd pay more on their.
They'd pay more on their own, I think, but if they're, if they're healthy, they don't pay nothing, but.
Yeah.
Right, right, but you could also.
We could, maybe if that's the case, we could incentivize even more, county pay more, to get more people on this plan.
Mm-hmm.
So, right, it'd be nice to find out how many people are paying, of course, out of their own pocket, every claim because they have such a high deductible, versus if they were on Plan fourteen, and now it's co-pay and we're paying part of that. Do you think they could fucking give us an answer?
Claims analysis on each, each plan.
Exactly. To see how, if these people weren't on this and they're on Plan fourteen, what that would cost.
Exactly.
Right.
Right.
Cause this is like our whole group, it's not.
Right, it's not breaking down.
Breaking it up.
Yeah, yeah, I can ask them for that.
Do you wanna hold off on this?
No, 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 I want to take action today, I just, we just need to know this for future.
See if you're.
The thought just tried across my mind today, it's like.
Right, cause if it's a significant number, then maybe we wanna next year raise that number even more to really incentivize, really incentivize people. When they, right.
And I think a lot for an HSA plan, a lot, i- it's really geared for people that are healthy.
Right.
Younger, that doesn't have an alien body like a fifty-year-old woman. You know, they don't have the, they're.
Welcome to the art show.
Yes, yes, um, so I, it, there's definitely a, it's geared for.
Really works.
Yeah, and it's great for them because.
But since you've got open enrollment every year.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and if you were on the HSA plan for a while, you've got money in your HSA to meet your deductible. So if you did become.
Right.
Chronically ill.
Yeah.
You could at the next year switch back if you used up all your HSA to pay for your deductible.
Right, right, it's that first year that is trying to build up that.
Right, like you say, when you're young and you're, if you're healthy, that's the time to be doing that.
Exactly, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, so it's, it's a great benefit, and I, and I'm telling you, anybody that we have come in, you know, and I, I'm, I always push it, like, hey, if you, you know, aren't considering having any children in the next year, if you, you know, if you don't have any issues, this is a great plan because the, the county is putting a chunk of money in there.
Right.
So, and, you know, so you, you can tell you have that younger crowd that is really interested in it.
And your HSA follows you.
Exactly, right.
You help for future hires.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can be able to offer that.
Yeah, yeah, and, and I do, I, I mean, when, whenever I have a new hire, I go over the plans and they, you know, and kinda give them the breakdown and let them know that, that's a, it's a huge benefit, so. It is. I had one.
Well, thank you for computing on this.
That'd be great.
Yeah, no problem. Yeah, no, I can do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I know Holmes Murphy had said something about, um, the ancillary plans, they, they went out and quoted, and because we have our long-term disability and our life and voluntary life with, um, the national insurance, um, and it wasn't up for renewal, that when they went to go quote all the, those other plans, they weren't getting really good quotes back because they want all of that together, so they said next year, they, I said, you know, why don't we just hold off? Because I don't wanna have to cre, get a new plan, you know, for all of these other, you know, cancer benefits and, you know, critical illness and that kind of stuff, and then maybe next year change it again, we'll, we'll be off on the renewal because those are typically a two-year rate, so I was like, why don't we just wait next year?
Maybe we'll get better quotes.
Yeah, when, when the other one is up for renewal, then let's look at all of it because that makes more sense, you know, so they held off on that and, um, so.
Well, I didn't attain a motion to approve this resolution.
Is my wording?
Devil's going up a little bit.
Right, and so on that.
Switch the vision over too, right?
Yeah, a better benefit, and it's cheaper.
That's cheaper, so on the dental portion, um, the only difference in the dental, I mean, the rate went up just a scant bit, I believe, right? Um, we did on the single plan, and I don't know when we started doing this, so I did the seventeen percent on the single plan, but the family plan, you can see that the employee pays the lion's share of that premium, I, we've had it in the last few years where the employer, the county pays the same amount, whether it's single or family, I don't know why, but it has been, and I didn't know if the board wanted to look at that and change it, or you know what I'm saying?
Right.
Figure the seventeen percent, I can see what it. Come on, calculator.
One twenty, one twenty-two, one twenty, seventeen percent.
Seventeen percent is twenty dollars and forty-two cents. So the county would pay ninety-nine seventy.
How many employees, well, how many employees, we have to pick it all, man?
Um, it's most everybody, but we have a lot, um, um, gosh, I can't remember exactly what happened.
Sixty bucks a month if you gotta add a cost, if you got a hundred employees.
I, it's not quite a hundred.
Six thousand a month, times twelve, that's seventy-two grand a year. More, the county would pay.
And you don't have to change it, I mean, I say.
I remember some conversation years back about that, but I don't remember why we did that.
It's always been that since I.
It has.
It's always been that you paid the full amount on single and just gave the single towards the family, um, and then, what was it, last year you changed it or two years ago changed it to where the employee is paying a little something for single when they had never had to pay anything for singles, so.
Yeah. And you don't, I'm just, I just wanted to bring that up, that that was.
Yeah, we're not consistent when you compare the medical side to the dental side.
Right.
I mean, for this, you leave it as is.
You know, I mean, the, the vision, employee pays a hundred percent. So we have three different, we have three different philosophies.
Well, the county doesn't pay anything on vision.
Right, we don't pay anything on vision, but I mean, it's not the same philosophy as it is.
Right.
For the dental, there are three different philosophies for.
Absolutely, you do your current philosophy. There are.
Consistency is of any series.
And then, you do pay a hundred percent for life and LTD, so at least that's part of the vision, right?
Right, that's common, and that's.
No, it is.
That's common in the marketplace to do that.
Yeah, I, I think it's, it's mandatory, so.
Oh, is it mandatory? Oh, that's why it's common.
It's mandatory, we don't wanna go down that road.
I mean, I guess I'm happy doing it the way it is, and I'll just, I'll make a motion that we approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash one nine as presented with Schedule A.
Give me a second. I'll try. I have a second, but Kyle. Hey, for the discussion. Here's the resolution, so on paper, say aye, I'll start with Kyle.
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Ty?
Aye.
Chair goes aye.
And did you get the vision, um?
I've got it over here.
I need to sign that.
Yeah, cause then we can get the renewal package, um, first and after, so.
Thanks, Chair, putting that together.
Yeah, thanks to you.
Yeah, it can help to procure.
Um, you do, uh, you'll need to fill out forms, waiting coverage.
Trim.
That was in our packet as well.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, okay, alright, yeah.
Okay, thanks, Amy.
Yep.
Place for you to sign. Don't make me really sorry to sign.
You know, Terry, when the county started having the employee pay seventeen percent, or how they came up with that number? Or is that just been?
Two thousand and three.
Two thousand and four?
Two thousand and three or four.
They used to be, they used to pay a hundred percent, and then they moved to eighty-three, and then.
Oh, here's.
They didn't gradually get there one year.
Yeah, it's one, yeah.
It's right here.
Just remember the, you were working here.
The hospital that caused, you know, from going from taking nothing to paying.
Something.
Something. And I just remember that, at that time, the secondary roads negotiated, the bays covered more than what we had to take them, so we really still weren't paying anything. We all remember the like, well, we gave in, we gave, we gave an inch, now we'll never, like, you guys are pumped by your own insurance and you think this is a bad deal. It's gonna be a good deal. But it's inevitable. Unfortunately.
The other side of the phone call is people bitching about property tax.
Well, yeah, it's, I mean.
Alright.
Onto our flooring project.
Yep, and this is the trim, some of the, some of the old trim, some of the little quarter-round pieces didn't come up well. Um, some of the, the treasurer's office, that entire, uh, room was, um, not only, not only, um, it was kind of behind the old flooring and then coughed in, so there was not a good way to pry it out, and that old, this old trim, it is good stuff, it is really good stuff, it has like a little footing that goes underneath the wall trim.
Wow. The floorboard was like.
So, yeah, so it's like, it's like this, but it also has a little.
Like a T.
A little thing that goes underneath there to help stabilize it, anyway. So we need to do the entire treasurer's office, all, all three spaces. Um, we need to do, I think, um, Martha's space, that back part in the attorney's office, um.
Can they get trim that matches it or looks?
It won't match exactly, it won't.
When it's in one room by itself.
Exactly.
Where will we get that?
Exactly, he's got it figured out, Mr. Innovation Construction One.
And the bid was for?
It was for four hundred and fifty, um, linear feet of trim, uh, we won't need all of that because the recorder's office ended up finding enough of the old trim to make their room work. All she needs is quarter-round up underneath where the counter is to finish that, and most of that quarter-round is basically to help hold the flooring down, so it doesn't try to work its way up um, as it ages and stuff, so that quarter-round will be a benefit to the, um, ending, you know, result of the flooring.
Total dollar amount is?
Is sixty-three oh four, so it will end up being less than this, I mean, we will pay for the linear feet that we actually use.
Yep.
But, um, so, yeah.
The ten ice project, we need to finish it.
Yes, we do.
Yeah.
So do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Jean.
Second?
Second by Craig, hey, for the discussion. Hearing none, on paper, say aye.
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 Looks so, everything looks a little.
Yeah, it turned out so nice.
Much larger or something, I don't know, every office I walk in.
Yeah, so before we go into closed session, we do have Mark and Kyle here, at innocent input.
Be a lot of them.
They hear.
Dumbos blank, and empty.
Okay, hearing none.